I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, other person Schaefer.
Here.
Other person Bailey.
Here.
Other person Grimmer.
Here.
Other person Price.
Here.
Other person Iker.
Here.
Then other person Wilkin and other person Henry are excused. Mayor Atwell.
President.
Administrator Hafner.
Here.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will move down to four approval of the following meeting minutes, A and B.
I'll move to approve the minutes of April 17th.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes.
I'll move to approve the minutes of April 18th.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Okay, we'll move on to five city of Dellafield citizens come back.
Would you pull, yeah, pull the, there's a little tab on the top. Pull it towards you.
How's that? All right.
We're getting there.
Check on two. Hey, hey.
Yes, I'm.
Thank you. All right, now Patricia Barwig, 1832 West Shore Drive, Dellafield. I'm here today on behalf of the Dellafield Arts Foundation to thank you all for the help you've been giving us and then to invite you all, not for free, to our fundraiser, which is being held on May 13th. We're having Comedy City, ah, I think it's, it's kicked in. We're having Comedy City at the Fish Hatchery for $50 a head and there's a chance that you could win some money. There's something called Heads Tails, which I don't understand, but perhaps you would recognize. It promises to be a lovely evening with wine and beer for purchase and it's the only fundraiser we have all year except for dunning hapless souls into just plain giving us money. At least you'd get something for your money on this one. So that's number one. And number two, to thank you for the tent and to ask you how you would like your role in this acknowledged. Do you want it on a big sign at the top of the tent? Do you want it announced at each concert that the city has provided the tent? What sort of recognition would suit the common council best? And those are the two things I have been sent to check into. So I've said my piece, thank you very much.
Thank you. And thanks for all your years on Park and Rec.
Okay, we will go to the consent agenda, seeing nothing. Number seven, boards committees and commission reports. I believe we have no licenses, so we'll move on to planning commission.
Okay, well, we did have a meeting last week and it was primarily focused around the developments in and around the St. John's property with final plat approval for the Beacon Hill development as well as some preliminary plans that aren't so preliminary. We've been looking at them for over a year, almost probably, probably at least a year. So those are, those are going to be going through the varying levels of the approval process in a rather strict regimen over the next few meetings. So if you have concerns, questions, want to contribute ideas to that before their final, come to our next meeting, last Wednesday of the month. And that would be pretty much it. You can, I refer you to the minutes for any other information on plan commission.
Great, thank you very much.
Met on April 12th. Biggest discussion was on erosion control system that Lake Country Estates has with the village. And Lou Scoop from the committee was working with the, with the, with some people from the actual Lake Country Estates and somebody from the village. But there is a underground grading system there. The water comes across, it goes across a basin with grass that should be there. Lou said this thing is kind of deteriorated quite a bit and it could be maintained. The water that comes out of there goes underground to the corner of Mission and Egawicka, which then is a, there's a big tube that goes down to the lake from there. So Don was, Don Tills was going to ask, ask the city here if we could be sent a, send a crew down there just to take a look at that and just see if there's any issues that Tom has or anybody from DPW. Hopefully we can maybe get an agreement between the city and the village on how to maintain that because it's got to go into the lake, but it's not getting there because it just has to be properly maintained and plant the grasses again and get it graded so the water can drain down to that pipe. So I don't know if there's ever been any discussion about that, but it seems like it's needed. Village hasn't always been cooperative in that area, but it might be worth a trip over there just to see if you agree something needs to be done, but.
Talking about the retention pond at the end and the steps that come through that subdivision at the end and the stand pipe, I believe is still missing. Is that what we're talking about, same place?
Lou was told there is a pipe underground that goes underneath the street that goes to the corner.
There's supposed to be a stand pipe in that last retention pond to hold the water so that it has a chance to filter in or just runs right into the lake. To my knowledge, that stand pipe's been missing for 15 years.
The fact that it's gone, he probably didn't realize it was even there, so that wasn't even talked about, but.
So you're asking is this something new?
No. No.
Something very old.
So.
As long as that old subdivision.
Yeah. Okay. The last two things, the committees agreed that they'd like to do some educational and maybe some signage discussing boat wake size for the wakeboard boats, you know. I'm not asking for any kind of law or anything, just some education on how to properly use that to protect the, the lake, smaller boats and shoreline, so. Last thing is on egg oiling. The committee got out and did some knocking on doors and got the number of people giving permission for the egg oiling up by 30% over last year, so we should see a decrease in the, in the geese, so.
Great.
That's it.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to Park and Rec. Intrigue or.
Check, check.
Uh, no meeting in April, but our next meeting is the 21st and not formal meeting, but the park walk on the 21st and our regular meeting on the 22nd, at which time we'll be choosing a new chairperson for Park and Rec.
Sounds good, maybe the topic that was brought up by the citizen today might be something you were ready to discuss at the next council meeting.
Yeah, we can discuss that on the 15th. We'll be ready to discuss that on, at our council meeting, yep. Uh, no.
Uh, no meeting, no report, next meeting, our Wednesday meeting is canceled, I believe. Next meeting would be June.
All right, Mr. Iker.
Uh, we haven't had a meeting since our last council meeting. Next meeting is in two weeks where if we've got new members, we'll be welcoming them.
We did have a meeting. We are, it was short and sweet. There's movement to bring on a new officer, but that said officer has to pass physicals and a few other things and I'll have more information on that when it has been completed, likely by the end of the month.
Do you have a rough estimate and number of how many officers?
Four.
Four.
Yeah, no, yeah, I did know.
Uh, let me report, obviously, he's not here.
Uh, no meeting, no report, next meeting is May 9th.
Uh, we had a meeting, April 19th. The board committed to additional training to Watertown Fire Department, just over $3,000 for that contract. Sandy Roche resigned at that meeting after 15 years, I believe. And then lastly, revenue through the first quarter is on budget. Other than that, no other issues, significant issues.
Sounds good, thank you very much. And your management committees. Who is not here? And other committees, which I probably need to tend to like to get that moved. Okay, eight unfinished business, the mayor's report. And we've got life on here, a recognition of police service. Acknowledging those who work tirelessly in each of their departments to serve the city of Delphill and its residents.
Platforms throughout the week. I want to personally express my deepest thanks and gratitude to all employees for their dedicated service, to all city of Dellafield residents, businesses and visitors. While they may not always hear it, their hard work and dedication as city of Dellafield employees is valued and appreciated. Thank you again to all city of Dellafield staff for everything you do for our community.
Well deserved, well deserved.
I know they're not here, but.
Hold more, I need to switch.
They're resting.
Okay. B, discussion of possible action on the following items, except resignation of Michael Burns from citizens, citizen member position, term ending April 2025 on the Park and Rec Commission. Mike did an excellent job on the committee. His workload, as he explained to me in an email, has just gotten too great and he's not able to commit the time as he did in the past to, to Park and Rec. So he regretfully, regretfully needed to, to step down.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Mike Burns from Park and Rec and thank him for his service. I'll second.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Okay, we'll move on to number 10, new business. A, approval of vouchers payable report for reporting dates for 18, 2023 to 5/1, 2023 in the amount of $609,543.30 for accounts payable and $1,116.705.27 for payroll.
I'm moved to approve the voucher list.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Down to number 11, report of city officials, city administrator, one, A1, receipt of approval permit to install the St. John's Bay transient pier, boat pier project and update regarding funding for the project. Tom?
Yeah. As indicated in the memo in your packet, the city did receive the permit for the installation of St. John's Boat Pier. And if you recall, there was some additional funding necessary to provide the 50% local match that was included in the 2023 budget, but removed by the council from that budget approval. And the council directed staff to come back after the permit is secured. So we will be doing that and we'll have that as an agenda item on the next council meeting, May 15th. And just as a reminder, as a, as a budget amendment that will require a super majority of the council for approval, it'll require five votes to, for approval. And that's a, that's going to be a request for an additional $14,750 to get up to the city's $44,750 overall local match requirement. Any questions on that item?
When is the pier granting committee meeting?
So they meet quarterly, it's the, it's the Wisconsin Waterways Commission. They meet quarterly. The exact date has not been set yet, but the deadline to be on that meeting is June 1st and that meeting is going to be in early August. And right now the DNR thinks it'll likely be August 8th, but they've only confirmed that it'll be early August at this point. And that, that commission, it meets at a rotating location all around the state and I haven't heard what location they'll be meeting at this time.
I'll just, I'll just say the, the permit approval that's in the packet explains all the items of consideration that were submitted as well as how they, how they came to their approval process. I think that was helpful to have that in there to show what was, what they, what they looked at and what they, you know, what they considered, so I appreciate that.
Very good. And then moving on, the next item that I've got is an update regarding the no-through trucking signage in, for downtown Dellafield. The mayor asked me to include an update on the agenda for this item. We have the permits into the county and the state required for the installation of the signage. We do need signs in county right of way. And we're also looking at putting signage on both exit ramps from I-94 so that trucks know that they, where they need to go when they're getting off the ramp and that they can't turn into downtown Dellafield. We heard back on Friday from the county that our permit is approved, subject to us paying the permit fee, which we'll be sending in this week. And then we'll get the signs ordered and we expect to have them up shortly. I have talked to Police Chief Nyren and he is anxious to get his crews on this assignment as far as enforcement of this and especially enforcement up front early in the process. It's kind of a public education effort and hopefully after some initial effort, the truck traffic will die down along with the need for any significant resources on enforcement. So any questions on that? Good. And then one other thing that I want to mention, it's not on the agenda, is we also had our rating call today for our borrowing with Moody's Investment Services. It went very well. They liked what they heard, a lot of positive comments. And there's, you know, they indicated that there's absolutely no downward pressure at all on our rating and we expect that at a minimum our rating will hold at, at the same rating that we're currently at.
Good news.
Good.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, we'll go on to 11B, city clerk.
Okay, so today was the official posted day for the open book. Cal, Magnin, the assessor did indicate he had a few appointments. I don't expect those to come to fruition for objection, but if they do, the Board of Review is scheduled for May 25th, 2023 at 4:00 PM. The deadline to file the notice of intent to object is 48 hours prior to the meeting. So if you know of anyone who is thinking about filing objection form, they do have to at least verbally or in writing let the clerk's office know that they are going to be doing so, that they will be in to file their objection. We had a few last year that missed that opportunity, so I just want to make sure we're getting it out there. And then the final thing is, I've been working on the group quarters post census, the post census group quarters review, which is the review of the population count over at St. John's. I collected all of the information necessary from St. John's, filled out all of the paperwork. It's in the review process. St. John's has a unique situation regarding the youth housing in that they do generally have students that are there year round. And then they also have students that attend in more of like a boarding school capacity where they're there for the general school term. So I'm not really sure how it's going to pan out and I do expect to have to kind of have some follow-up and I will keep you all apprised to the situation as we go through. And that is all I have unless there are questions.
Sounds good, thank you very much. Okay, 11C, city treasurer. One, March 2023 treasurer's report, refer you to that. D, any request for future agenda items? Paul?
Yeah, I'll tell you one, maybe next month we can discuss ideas which would increase the flow of traffic through downtown.
For increasing?
Increase it. Increase the flow of traffic, not increase traffic, increase the flow of traffic. Kind of backs up and backs up, backs up the hill. Discuss any ideas that.
Good, anybody else? All right, you're seeing none, I'll refer you to any correspondence that came out. Seeing no further business, we are now adjourned at 7:22. Thank you for watching. Thank you for watching.